Bob Marney.
Bob Marney.
Marji.
Oh, okay.
And I told Captain Taylor he didn't have to come tonight. I have several notes for him.
The City of San Juan Batista Special City Council Meeting of April 14, 2023 is now in session. So. Stand for the city. I'm going to ask Councilman Flores, can you lead us in the flag salute?
You may. Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. He's still sitting.
We'll lead him to it.
Okay. So we now have a roll call. Mayor Edge.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember De Vries.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Flores. Cesar.
Cesar, did you hear us?
No, I didn't hear my name called, so I was waiting.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Oh, maybe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
So now we go on to public comment. Comments only on items that are on the agenda. Do we have any public comment?
I don't think we have any public.
Yeah, we do. I think we do.
We do.
We do. We have some public.
I can't tell if anybody has their hand up or not.
I know. So if we don't have any comment, we'll go on to item three, discussion items. COVID-19 general update.
Thank you, Mayor Edge, members of the city council. I'm sharing my screen with you to give you an update, and there's always lots to talk about. Earlier in the week, I thought, oh, we don't need a meeting today. Last week, I mean, like last Thursday, but the things changed so quickly. And some good things, some good things to share today. First and foremost, I just want to clarify that every time we've met, we've basically reaffirmed that the city council is supporting the continuation of the state of local emergency. I thought our code, the state code is 60 days, but our municipal code is every 21 days. So we'll start every briefing like this with just a reconfirmation that we're still in a state of emergency and anticipate being there for some time until further notice. After 60-day notice, we'll have a formal extension so that we're consistent with Cal OES and their standards. So that's the nature of our opening statement. And let's see. Let me go down. All right, I always start on the top and work down to San Juan. Save the best for last, of course. At the federal level, there are no new policy changes, but there is an important debate that's going on now between the Speaker of the House and the President about a third relief package and what would be the components of that relief package. And it's important because when the CARES Act was approved, funding, direct funding to cities was reserved for those cities of half a million and more. And there's usually a caveat in there about other governmental agencies serving a similar-sized population. And so in conversations with the League of California Cities, they have written letters hoping that Ambag would qualify because Ambag serves the three counties, serves about 750,000 people. So if the CARES Act could be made available to Ambag, and then they would distribute it to the smaller cities in our region, none of our cities are more than half a million. And we know with the status of the other finances, that would be a real bummer. Deanna Sessom said to me that if that happens, she thinks it's kind of a long shot, but if it happens, the city would be receiving as much as $375,000 to pay for its FEMA expenses. Our FEMA expenses are much lower than that so far, thank goodness. So just wanted to share that with you. It's a, it's something that's a policy that's developing that we're tracking closely with the League's help. And if there were no new news on the SBA program that I'm aware of, we can talk about that later in the agenda when we talk about item 4A, establishing a budget and a program for our local businesses. For those of you who were able to join the Governor at lunch today, he had a lot on his plate, and so I just took this quote right out of the Sacramento Bee. He had a six-point presentation. The strategy is moving from, one, about population, about policies restricting the population, like shelter in place, to policies more on an individual approach. So a lot of people have been asking, what does the next chapter look like? What does it look like to change gears and start to a little more comfort level? And so first and foremost, on his list, we're expanding testing so that we can try and get the entire population tested rather than just those that have symptoms. Because as we know, people with symptoms, people without symptoms can also be carriers. So we're not going to know in that case. And I'm just going to move our focus over just a little bit if I can. I guess I can't. Okay. Protecting high-risk groups, including seniors and the medically vulnerable and people in facilities like nursing homes. You know, some of the worst scenarios are being carried out in nursing homes where an employee or an individual is found to have this issue. This is why all the college students were sent home to make sure that the dormitories weren't like that. So this was his number two priority. Number three, progress in developing treatments. We're so lucky to live in California with Stanford and maybe five or six, the Scripps Institute and others, all working hard to help the nation find a treatment. And then the ability of schools and businesses to support physical distancing. So we need to be talking about programs where schools, he used an example, would have staggered start times. So the kindergartners would start at 7:30, the first graders would come at 8:00, and so that they could avoid each other. And this is what he started to describe as the new normal. Businesses also, we've already experienced, those of us who have been running our essential errands, how businesses are practicing physical distancing differently than they were just a week ago. So and then his last consideration, the sixth one, is the ability to decide when to reinstitute stay-in-home orders if needed. The theory is, and Dr. Bogie and Dr. Marty supported this in an earlier call this morning with the county and the two cities, we talked about every time we relax our stay-in-place orders, there's have to be an increase in positive cases. So we may be fluctuating. He referred to it as a toggle switch, or not an on-off switch, but one where we would fluctuate back and forth between a strict shelter-in-place order to a more relaxed one until we get things figured out. And so that's what the Sacramento Bee was sharing with us. Some of the good news is on this slide. And you can see here, the blue line on this chart that the Governor shared with us today is where we are now, and we are bending the curve, but it has not started curving down yet. So there are two things that he needs to see before he will talk about a shelter-in-place that's more relaxed. So we thought if we did nothing, that we would be way up at the top of this chart. And the white line going across is our capacity, our capacity for beds in our state, ICU beds and treatment facilities. So we're nearing that, but we're not there yet. But what we're doing is we're prolonging. We're prolonging the issue, and the better we do at sheltering in place and preventing the spread of this disease, we are prolonging it, but we're having fewer victims of the disease. So that's all really good news. But again, the number one thing we can do right now is to continue to shelter in place until this curve starts to bend down. And then secondly. Fourth of July in San Juan. Sorry, just going to wait for this. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's hard to talk with the noise in the background. Okay. They're gone. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. The second thing that he wants to do right now is to create what he called a check-in corps, which would increase our tracking capacity. It would be a group, a team from the state that would be deployed to various counties within the state, that as soon as a positive test came up, that they could track it and that they could stay on top of it. So that way, we have better control over where the disease is spreading and where it's growing the fastest in our state. So these are all, these are all steps that he wants to put in place. And then later this week, he's going to be announcing what he referred to as a new economic team, task force to jumpstart our economy later as we move towards this. One thing, let's see, I don't want to get ahead of myself, so let's see where I'm at. So that's what the Governor is talking about, and moving from this population strategy to an individual strategy. He emphasized that reopening of our cities will be a blended approach and if there might be setbacks in shelter in place. And he gave some examples of what a new norm would look like. Fewer tables in restaurants. So a restaurant with a capacity of 50 tables right now may only be allowed to have a capacity of 25. This is one of his examples. Wearing masks at grocery stores and in other places where we might come within, closer than five feet of each other, six feet of each other, and no mask gatherings, he thought, until a vaccine was found. So that puts off any groups over larger than 10 for a long time. He thought maybe until the end of August. He's not sure. It depends. So that's speculation for now, and we'll just keep our fingers crossed that it happens faster.
Wow.
So the county is testing more people, and again, we're showing a pretty sharp increase. It was 10% last week, up 26% this week, up to 39 cases as of today. Dr. Marty and actually the Board of Supervisors, when they met this morning, they talked a lot about when to wear masks. And the Board of Supervisors was adamant that we needed a clear direction from Dr. Marty, the health officer. So basically, he suggested, he recommends that we wear masks when you think the social distancing may be compromised. So that's in the grocery stores, for example, and other places. So I've asked city employees to carry masks with them all the time, and I can wear mine around my collar, and if another employee comes into my office, I can just quickly put it on. Or if I'm walking in the street, he said it's not necessary. You can go more than 10 feet away from your neighbor walking their dog. That wasn't an issue. So if we have city maintenance workers, for example, working out in the city, and they're fine, they have the mask in their back pocket, they have the mask in their truck, if someone's dog wanders over to them and they start chatting, then they can just grab their mask. And it's like carrying chains in the CRAs. You just have them in your trunk in case you need them. So that's as clear a direction as we can get from the health officer on masks. Something that's really important to realize in the conversation with the Board of Supervisors today is they wanted to establish a coordinated plan for reopening cities, and then to have a coordinated plan in our county be coordinated with Monterey County and Santa Clara County and Merced and other neighboring communities. Because we want to be following the same calendar and the same process as these other counties. And at first, they were hell-bent on setting up another ad hoc committee with both cities and the county. And Jim Gilio, Supervisor Gilio, said, you know, we already have this meeting on Fridays, and we have the school districts and everybody else there. So you can expect this conversation to come up on Friday, and this will be our fourth one. So I believe it's Dan De Vries' turn to join us at that meeting, and I'll try and keep the whole council updated as I do on Friday afternoons. But that's, look for that to come on that agenda. What does it look like? And they want San Juan to have a say in how we reopen our city. So we need to take advantage of that. So that's that unified message and a unified approach. So that's expanding the current Friday joint meeting. And then there's our NICSIL notice again. Can't forget that from the county. And then what are we doing here? Well, at City Hall, we remain close to the public, and we spent the last three or four days moving staff from normal funding sources to FEMA funding sources as best we can. What does that mean? It means thank you to Hollister Fire Department for supporting us in this effort. Chief Bedoya came and met with me last Wednesday. We talked about implementing an incident command system just for San Juan Batista. And for those of you at home, I did send out what is our very first Incident Action Plan, an IAP. Learning a whole new set of acronyms here. And Rich Brown and I are the incident commanders and will share. Rich will do this Monday through Friday, nine to five, and I'll pick up the tasks on weekends and evenings. So if there's an incident in the town, if some kids are playing football or something like that, then give me a call and we'll respond. So it's a tool that we took right from Hollister's, and we met with Hollister's Incident Command Team today. That was great. Learned a lot from them about closing their parks and their playgrounds and other things that they're doing. Getting these gloves into this wastewater stream is a bummer. So we learn a lot from each other that way. More importantly, each member of the team then is assigned as a disaster services worker, and there's a provision for that in our personnel policies. So the recommendation, and we are accomplishing this, is to get each of our staff members trained on the first three levels of the ICS FEMA system. So we're going to have them sworn in, and we're going to have them trained on ICS 100, 200, and 700. And then coincidentally, I had received in January, February, ICS training in the 300 class, which is for managers and supervisors. So that puts us eligible, we hope, for FEMA money. And we're still working on that, and we're still working with the League on making sure little guys like San Juan get counted when it comes time to dole out the FEMA dollars. So that's one thing that we're doing that's really pretty cool, and I wanted to thank Hollister and Chief Del Campo and Charlie Bedea for that. So yeah, staff is excited about completing the FEMA training. If we didn't have four hours of work related to FEMA, it could be reassigned and help with the Food Bank or with other organizations that are looking for trained, vetted, experienced workers. So that means that all of our employees then become part of the response and part of the regional response to this emergency. We received access to the FEMA grant portal last week, which is very exciting. So that means we're in line. We'll be signed up before the 17th to receive FEMA dollars. We're tracking on our time cards. We're tracking all of our purchases and expenses related. We don't have that many yet, fortunately. We've expanded the code enforcement officers' hours, Rich, and we have a little bit of a budget on tonight's agenda later that we'll talk about when we get there. Otherwise, Wendy's on the line, and she can pitch in if she would like to. We don't have a lot to report this time on the budget, except that we had a good meeting. You recall in January, we brought on board a consulting team called CityGate, and you met Jane, the retired city manager, and she facilitated our strategic planning. Her partner in crime, working for us, not in crime, her partner is retired finance director, Andy Green, who worked for Pasadena and some other cities. And Wendy and I had a chance to talk with Andy and put some strategies together for our budget going forward. Deb Mall and I and Wendy had an email conversation today about whether or not the city had to establish a budget by July 1st, or could we wait? And interestingly enough, CIO Reyes Benoza presented to the Board of Supervisors today a budget calendar that extended into the first week in September. Now, the county has a special relationship with the state, especially in terms of healthcare funding and medical financing and so forth, Cowworks. So they really need the state to share their budget before they can adopt theirs. But Deb explored the government code and found that we would need to pass a resolution, Deb, if I'm right, that extends our current operating budget into July and into August if we wanted to wait until we committed. We had a better idea of the sales tax impact and the property tax impact and the revenues. So I don't know if Deb or Wendy want to chime in on the budget status, or Deb, you helped me research that.
Right, yeah, we can just do it by resolution. We can extend the time to act under the old budget when that comes up.
Okay. So Wendy, have you put any thought to that idea? I know we haven't talked about it very much.
Yeah, I mean, I've already made progress on the next fiscal year budget just based on the expenditures and what we anticipated for personnel costs, but not having these large revenue budget items in line, it's hard to adopt a budget that we would feel comfortable with. But once we get a better idea of what the revenue streams are going to be like, we can move forward quickly with the work that's already been done with the budget today.
Great, great. Thank you. Yeah, we're implementing some new templates and a much cleaner presentation of the budget for the city council this year, so we look forward to sharing it with you. Okay, very good. Thanks, Wendy and Deb. One of the questions that have come up, these four, these three issues have been on my desk this week.
One second. What's the date again that we can extend it to?
I think we just adopt a resolution and keep the regular operating budget as long as we have to, feel like we have to, as long as the state of emergency exists. I think the government code is specific to how you operate under the state of emergency.
Okay.
I don't know, Deb, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, so.
We could do it whenever we get to that point.
Right, so lifting the state of emergency means adopting a new budget.
Okay, so Wendy, you said that it's almost completely finished, or it's in the process, and with adding the high-revenue streams data in there, it would be a short time to complete? Did I get that right?
I mean, my recommendation, Dawn and I will continue to work on that. We were still smoothing out capital projects. And, you know, we have our basic operating expenditures that are pretty consistent from year to year, so I've already entered in those just as a draft for Dawn and I to review before we present it. Also, I've entered in all the personnel expenditures and the related benefits and burden. I think that, you know, as we are waiting to learn more about the revenues, we still have some work to do around the contracts, around the capital projects. We can work those into the budget, and then once we get a better idea on revenues, I think we can move quickly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Do you want to ask other council members if they have any budget questions while we're here?
So Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I do have a comment, though. I think I too listened to the Governor's report at noon today and copied down his six-point plan, just like you did. And I also listened to the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning, and it was somewhat, they couldn't arrive at a decent conclusion because they were probably three hours too soon. And I think we should follow the Governor's plan because the other counties will be following that plan. And that's a well-thought-out plan, a lot of detail already built into it that the Board of Supervisors and the doctors from his pockets frankly didn't have on their radar. So we kind of have the advantage of being after everybody, and we can kind of add all this stuff together. But I would highly recommend that we kind of follow along the Governor's plan.
Thank you. Councilman De Vries, do you have any comment?
No, no comment.
Councilman Flores.
Cesar, can you hear us?
It's me. I was, I was for about five or 10 minutes, my internet went, so I had to change locations as you can see in the background. So did I miss anything?
Well, how do you answer that question? No, sort of maybe.
You gotta have, you gotta laugh. I mean, the situation is so.
No, that's okay, Cesar. Yeah, you did. And so we were getting comments from the different council people, but yeah, you did miss. So I guess, well, we were talking about extending the budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, I heard all that.
Oh, you did?
Oh, okay.
Do you have a comment and question?
Did you have any questions about the budget?
No, I trust the people that are doing, that are assigned with that kind of work to do a good job.
Thank you, Cesar.
Thank you.
Okay. So, no, I have a few more points just to share, and these have come up this week since Monday morning. We routinely raise our fees and raise our trash rates, and we're also looking at water and sewer rates this year. The water and sewer rates are to be reviewed every five years, and they are valid through June 30th. The CPUC asked us to waive penalties for late payments and so forth, and not to shut off any utilities. I spoke to them in San Francisco before tonight's meeting and said, are you thinking of any actions or recommending actions to the Governor about increasing rates? And I was reminded that with the trash franchise, and Cesar probably remembers, we're part of a team with Hollister and the county. And Hollister is going forward and recommending an increase in rates, and I assume so is Reyes Benoza in the county board. So one thing we could consider possibly is raising the rates July 1, but implementing them as soon as the emergency is over. Or, you know, we can talk about doing something like that. So that way, we have the Prop 218 process and all the detailed three-month process completed, and we just hold the new rates in abeyance until the emergency is over. So that's just an idea that came to mind because I am working hard on a water and sewer master plan that we'll talk about next Tuesday, and also working on a rate study that would become effective for July 1. So that's what my thinking is, and I wonder if the council has any thoughts on that.
I agree. I think that it's a good idea. We shouldn't implement it right away, but, you know, wait until this is all over and then go ahead and implement the rates, the broad rate hike.
Okay, okay.
That's just my opinion.
I agree.
Do you want to ask her?
So Councilman Flores, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Councilman De Vries.
No comment.
Councilman Freeman.
No comment.
Okay, thank you.
So we've already gone over the mask policy, mandatory for city staff to carry masks and wear it when near others. I had a conversation with a couple council members this week about closing parks. And Closing Parks Friday, we did in response to the health order that talks about no-team sports. So the health order does not mandate that we close our parks altogether, but it does mandate that our population not play football or basketball or other sports.
Yeah, it says in there about anything with balls.
Right, right.
No ball sports.
So mountain biking's okay.
Mountain biking's good.
Mountain biking's good. But balls are troublesome. So I was listening in on Hollister's Incident Command briefing this morning, and they talked about how difficult it is to get a crane into a basketball court to remove a basketball backboard because the kids won't stop playing basketball in their basketball courts. So we have a similar issue, and I talked with Councilmember De Vries, who is across the street from the park, obviously, and Councilmember Freeman, and they didn't, they had different opinions, but I wanted to see how the council felt about that. Maybe we leave them closed at least for the immediate future, but reconsider in a week or more. It was a reaction that a lot of agencies were taking due to Easter. So you closed Toro Park because for 50 years, they've had an Easter egg hunt there, but not this year. And so the county of Monterey closed Toro Park. And we had an interesting Easter egg hunt. Rochelle can describe it. Rochelle, are you on the line? She's probably muted. I don't know if she's still there. Could you describe the Easter egg hunt for us?
I noticed it online. It was a, something where residents hid things in their windows, and then people could walk or drive by to find, like a scavenger hunt. And they did say to keep socially distanced from everybody, six feet or more, and follow all the rules. So I think it went out off all right. Is it not post anything telling them not to do it? Because it seemed like they were trying to obey all the laws.
Yeah, thank you, Rochelle. Sorry to put you on the spot, but we did rehearse that question. You were, okay.
I participated.
You participated, okay.
I had a basket full of stuffed animals at our driveway. That's, you know.
Cool, okay. Well, it didn't sound like we broke any rules, so Easter's a hard one. So, does anyone have any thoughts on closing parks and how long we should keep them closed? Or would anyone like to talk about that further?
So, Councilman Flores, do you have any ideas on that?
I do not. You know, I think if we could maybe call a couple of parents that have kids or whatever, they would have a better answer than I do.
Yeah, okay.
Councilman Freeman.
I agree that we should discourage any playing baseball, football, basketball, et cetera, at the parks. Excuse me, but at the same time, I don't like the look of the yellow tape around the parks. It makes it look like a crime scene or something. So, I think we should take that down within a week or two or as soon as possible.
Thank you. Councilman De Vries.
Yeah, well, I've got quite a vantage point. I'm looking at the yellow tape in the park right now. And I don't think the issue is access as much as it is, I mean, to people that are obeying the shelter-in-place and the social distancing guidelines. It's that, it's the kids who decide to ignore it. And specifically, as Dawn knows, we had a group of about 20 kids that were playing tackle football every afternoon or early evening over there. One day in particular, Dawn, and Dawn, you could probably describe this better because I wasn't aware of it, but the sheriff's department was even called. They went out there, broke everybody up, and the kids just returned. So, the question whether we can prevent that type of behavior in some manner, John, that doesn't involve the yellow police tape. Because you're right, you know, it's not the most safely thing in the whole world. I'm looking at it right now. But on the other hand, you know, 20 kids playing tackle football, that's not healthy and safe for anybody. One kid in that group has COVID, and they're going to each go home to their respective houses and transmit the virus to a lot of folks. So, that's kind of the quandary, I think.
I told those kids to stop playing the first day I saw them, and they told me this was a shelter-in-place issue and I should get home right away. When 20 kids tell you that, yeah, kind of crazy. Got to walk home then. What are you going to do? Okay, I'm out of here. Yeah, I agree, the yellow tape is a site. Around the library, is there a reason? But is there anything that kids can play on? Well, I guess it's the big field that could potentially, unlike, yeah, similar to Abbey Park, a big field where somebody could play in.
Right, and we talked to the superintendent, Michelle Huntun, and she approved of us taping off the soccer field. And she's reported to me more than once that the kids were hopping the fence and going inside ends our school. So, that was another issue.
You know, the tape is ugly, but it's also, it's right out there and it's telling parents and kids that they should not cross that area. And so, it's a big reminder. And I'm saying, you know, is there some way that, I mean, I hate to be so hard like this, but if we don't have parents that have control of their kids, and I'm sure the parents have told their children not to go out and play with the ball, and they still do it, then maybe there has to be some sort of a fine?
So, Deb pointed out that our emergency provisions do allow the code enforcement officer to cite people for that. And so, we left the copy of the press release on each doorstep surrounding Abbey Park to make sure that each homeowner had one. So, that's, we took that extra step, and it's easier and faster, obviously, to send Rich out there to break something up like that than to wait for the sheriff to come. So, that is one thing that we have under an emergency.
Could we send a notice out with the water bill or get a, send out a notice?
It already went out, didn't it?
Just send out a notice.
Can the sheriff or just a note on the bill? People don't look at that real well.
We were required to send a water quality report with the last water bill, so there wasn't any room for additional inserts. That's what I thought.
Actually, it was the Water Resource Association notice about watering, you know, watering schedules.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Into the summer, yeah.
Yeah, water quality reports due in July.
No, that's the only thing I have to say, I don't know.
Does Rich drive around all day?
No.
He's in the office a lot?
Well, it depends.
Or doing other things?
Today, he helped put together our incident action plan. So, he did spend more time today inside than usual.
So, we have Level 1 as our.
Private security.
Private security, can we put them during the day?
If we needed to. I guess, he is out throughout the day. We didn't, I haven't seen any kids congregating like this. And council members, please speak up if I'm wrong, but I don't know if this is still happening. Has anyone seen anyone actively out in the community like this? Groups of kids, 15, 20 people?
I have not since the sheriff's incident coming out and taking care of it, sort of.
We could, we could.
And not just for that, for any other infraction or anything that goes against shelter-in-place and not congregating, and I thought.
Yeah, we can follow up on that in the morning. At least talk to them and talk to Rich and see what they think. They don't write citations, so they would still need Rich's support in that regard.
Could they?
Deb, I don't know, could Level 1, could we have a private firm writing citations under this?
No.
Okay.
No, we haven't authorized that under our city code, so.
So, Rich gets to do it because he's a city employee?
Right, he's a code enforcement officer.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I just.
They could be eyes out on the road, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know how to handle that.
Well, it's an important question because, as the governor mentioned, moving from a population policy to an individual policy means that you need to be able to enforce when individuals violate the policy. And I hear Hollister is having similar issues, so it's one that we can work on, come up with some creative ideas together. That was my thought the night of the shooting. If Level 1 was made aware that people weren't supposed to congregate like that, then they could have perhaps helped, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything more on that?
Any other comments? Public comment?
Oh, wait a minute, I have one more slide.
Oh, sorry.
Hang on, public.
This is Rochelle's idea and her creation, the Mighty Networks. I see a lot of council members have signed up for this. That's awesome. This is our little community social network that we've built using the Mighty Networks app and software. And Rochelle, do you want to talk about the postcard?
Hopefully, it's easy to read, and I thank Councilmember Flores for helping me with the translations. We wanted to provide information that was specific to San Juan Batista and didn't duplicate what was on, what the county just announced this past week.
So, this is local phone numbers on the back of the postcard with all of our extensions listed there. A 911, 211, of course, how to reach the county public health office. And then, and so, this is out in the mail by Friday, you think, Rochelle?
Postal graphics was closed when I sent over the printing request, so I'll know tomorrow how fast they can get it turned around.
Okay. Spanish and English, okay.
Very cute. Well done.
Very nice.
Okay, that was my last piece, but it occurs to me, Mayor, you've done some work with Hazel Hawkins and others, maybe the council has some other community input that we could benefit from. With the clinic, with the clinic?
The clinic, oh, yes. I don't know if all of you are aware, but our clinic has been closed. And in the beginning, they had said because of low patient participation, they weren't having a lot of patients. And then I was told it was budget reasons. And I feel that it is unacceptable to have it closed because I don't think that we have that many people, but at the same time, we need to have a place where our local residents can go and get checked out if they're not feeling well, if somebody suspects that they have the virus. They would end up having to drive all the way into Hollister, and some of our seniors do not have.
Jump drive.
And yes, there is a county transit, but to have to call somebody to come pick them up and then take them, drop them off, and then wait to come and get them back into San Juan Batista. So, to me, it's unacceptable that they have closed it down, and I am going to try very hard, and I'm hoping that I have everybody else's support. We need to get that open again. That's my feeling.
I was shocked that they closed.
So, we went through the Emergency Operations Center, and Chris Mangano contacted Hazel Hawkins. They were not willing to reopen the clinic, but they did put out a press release explaining how patients that would normally go to the clinic could receive their services. So, that's a step in the right direction, but we need to see better results in that. Okay, so we'll stay on it. Does anyone have any comments on that?
You know, we have someone from the health clinic there. Can we get a statement?
We have someone from the health clinic?
We do?
Where?
Look at your participant list. San Diego Health Foundation, Hollister. Right under Rochelle.
They just hung up. I'm just kidding.
Did you find it?
Oh, there they are.
Okay, who's representing the Health Foundation? Can we have somebody speak up?
They appear to be on mute.
But they're not deaf.
Okay, I unmuted myself, I think.
Thank you, yes, hi, Rosa.
Hi, yeah, I know that these are difficult times, and we have a number of people that are missing, that are patients that are in San Juan Batista, but we would be willing to help set up something to be able to help the community of San Juan Batista on this. So, perhaps if we have members that need care and are having difficulties with access, they could call our phone number, and we can figure a way to serve people. We try to set up our patients' medical medicine, particularly individuals that can't travel and so forth. So, we can figure something out if people are in need of.
Do you need a facility, Rosa?
We actually have the mobile clinic.
Okay.
Again, we would have to be careful with this because of the COVID situation. You know, we're having people come to the site and conduct a physical, and then we can set them up for medicine, post that. And we do have a site there, the WIC site, we have it open that. But we are working to work with you and figure out a way to service your community.
Thank you, that's awesome.
That's nice, thanks, Rosa.
Thank you.
So, should we follow up with you, Rosa?
Yes, yes, I can talk to Dawn and talk about.
But wasn't, excuse me, wasn't that action taken by the hospitals?
It was.
So, if it was, we need to talk to Underwood, to Ken.
I think he's retired.
Yeah, well, who's in charge of the hospital or the foundation?
Dr. Bogie?
No, we're two different entities, so I would suggest at this time, if you do have people from San Juan Batista that need services, just call our main line, and our people know the protocol in terms of how to service the community. So, but if you wanted something a little bit more organized, then perhaps I could have that conversation with Dawn in terms of how we can move forward in a more organized fashion.
Yes, I would like that.
Okay, well, Rosa Vivian, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, questions?
Okay.
Okay, if not, then we'll go on.
Hello?
Hello, a public comment on this?
I don't think the hand icon is really alerting anybody with my hands up. Good news for the council and mayor and staff and visitor, this is talking more slowly. I also was alarmed and kind of surprised when I saw that Hazel Hawkins pulled out of a little community clinic. At least, you know, there should be more of an outreach, if not in the way of having a line where people can call in if they have questions about COVID or they feel like they might have symptoms, at least talking to a local medical staff person, but just to pull out of the community. Because just at this time, this time and place is just not acceptable. I agree with the mayor. I did notice that we do have staff from San Diego Health Foundation. I'm speaking as a professional healthcare provider. I actually, I don't know if I can be of help somehow in the community, you know, handing out flyers or answering questions, but I feel that having other options and talking to the Health Foundation is a good thing. But it depends on how you want to venture forward because you can't just set up shop without medical licensees. I understand the city wants to be there for its citizens, but it depends in what format. But I think Hazel Hawkins has been around for like four decades, five decades, almost, since the 70s. The hard worker people, they do a great job of outreach. They're more community-oriented. I think they'd be a great organization to hook up with, but it just depends on what you want to do and how to go about it because you're talking about, you know, medical malpractice, you're talking about licensees, you're talking about all that stuff. But I suppose they have a mobile clinic, parking that. Not getting the tip advice, they could go around all of that, you could basically go around that. You could probably talk to the young lady who's speaking to you, but they've got the mobile clinic, which is self-contained. So, yeah, I think it's a good, you're venturing out with other options.
So it's us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Sorry.
No, I think it's our connection.
It's our connection, not yours.
I can see you very well, so you all look nice. Corona-free.
Okay, all right, thank you. So now we go on.
Yeah.
So, we go on to item number four, an action item. Consider adopting Resolution 2020 expects establishing a $20,000 COVID-19 emergency fund using general fund reserves to pay for a new part-time position to serve as a disaster service worker that will assist business owners through the state. service worker that will assist business owners through the state office of emergency services and federal emergency management administration assistance process, and to provide for associated supplies and services.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. In a conversation with Wendy, our CPA Wendy Cummings, and Andy Green from City Gate, we talked about how we could best help our city recover from this disaster, and it was recommended that we find a way to support our businesses, and perhaps this would be the best tool to consider, especially if we can make it FEMA eligible. So by saying that, I mean, all this position of disaster services worker, have them in training and get certified in the ICS system, and come onboard as part of our incident action plan, working under the operations unit, to work directly with businesses and help them with their SBA loans, and I've got the programs listed there, and I'm sorry for all the acronyms, the PPP loans are the Paycheck Protection Program application, and then the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Application is the one below that, and then there are grants associated with both of those programs, but they are quite complicated. And at one point last week, they changed the rules, and I received a notice saying, if you, if your business applied before March 30th, you have to reapply, and it's just, it's just the kind of thing that perhaps our businesses could use help doing. If we can get all of our businesses enrolled in these two programs in particular, we would have really a much better shot at rebounding once the economy opens back up again. And then coincidentally, as I was putting this together, I came across a program from the city of Marina that's also asking for technical support for the same exact purpose. And so we're not alone in this interest, they have over 200 businesses that they're soliciting help for, professionals who may be able to assist Marina's small businesses in completing the SBA loan applications and obtain other types of disaster relief. So it's a common theme amongst local governments to see how we can keep our sales tax and business economy up and running as strong as possible as soon as we can invite the public back to our community. So with that, I did reach out and share the job description with the San Benito Economic Development Corporation, and Mark there, I have a quote from him in the back of the report, strongly supporting this effort, saying that it would be a proactive action, tying it to the FEMA process to make sure that we can, well, we'll do our best to get FEMA reimbursement that's never guaranteed, but I would estimate at $26 an hour, it would last 20 hours a week until well into September, and that would give us $4,000, $5,000 left over to spend on whatever equipment, another laptop, other tools of the trade that would help implement this process for the businesses and for this staff position should we bring someone onboard. We do have a resume from someone who would be quite good at this, I've shared it with others, and might be able to put this, get the wheels, get the rubber on the ground by early next week. So with that, happy to answer any questions that the council may have. That's pretty much the summary of the staff report. I also provided a summary, 14 pages of the CARES Act, the two trillion dollar act that declared the need for this. So with that, Mayor and City Council, happy to answer any questions.
So Vice Mayor, do you have any questions, concerns?
So you do have somebody in mind already?
Yeah, I do, I got a referral from the San Juan Committee, a person who lives in San Juan and who's very interested in promoting our businesses and wants to, thought that this would be a good way for her to get her feet wet, she was laid off from Silicon Valley and wants to stay here in town and help us with our issues, so.
And is it through September or until the emergency would be over, if it was August or June?
Right.
Why September?
I just picked September, I just picked 20 weeks, and did the math in my Excel spreadsheet, out about 20 weeks, and that's what it come to, so.
Okay.
That's like a 90-day window for me, July to September.
Councilman Flores, do you have any comments, questions?
I'm sorry?
You can't hear us again.
Beth, does anyone hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. I couldn't, you couldn't hear me because I was muted. No, I don't have any comments, I look, it's pretty good, and I think it's a good move, something that'll benefit the view of the city, and our village.
Our village. Thank you. So Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions or comments?
I was just wondering if there is a possibility for reselling it out past September, getting the idea from the plan the government needs them sent out, and it's going to take, you know, he said specifically, there's not going to be any off-bond switch, the new normal is going to be a very different normal, and things will take a long time to get back to where they need to be, and so I'm thinking we, I'm thinking September might be optimistic, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, thank you for that feedback. We can always bring it back to council and extend it if the council wishes to. Also, by September, we'll have a better idea if there'll be FEMA money to help pay for these services.
Councilman DeVries?
Yes, Dawn, did you say that 100% of this is reimbursable by FEMA?
I was hoping it would be, but I'm getting mixed messages from the League of California Cities right now, and so I can't guarantee it. That's basically the feedback I got earlier this morning, talking with Deanna. So they are lobbying FEMA to get direct help for small cities, and if that were successful or a new relief package were approved that had the benefit for small communities, then this would definitely fall in place. That's why I'm going to the trouble of making sure that this is a disaster services worker that's part of our FEMA incident command system. So we're doing our best to make this FEMA eligible, we're going to document every expense related to it and have a good case to make when the time comes. But I can't, I can't speak for FEMA, can't guarantee that they'll be able to pay. And in conversation of that nature with Deanna Sessom, I thought the $15,000 or $20,000 was a much easier risk to take than my original $100,000 proposal, so.
Right.
I don't know if Wendy wants to speak to this, because she's got the most experience with these programs. Wendy, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think this is actually good for a few reasons. It lets your community know that the city is there to assist them with these complicated programs. The city's not really in a position right now to be obligating itself to let the funds, you know, loan funds to the community, but our last meeting, we talked about having the merchants go through the various programs of the SBA, namely the EIDL loan program, which would be that $10,000 loan program that's supposed to fund within three days, and just get the money in the merchant's hands so they can continue doing their business or be able to hit the ground running when we're, the stay-in-place orders are relieved. Unfortunately, a number of people that I've been working with that do have tenants that are small businesses, they applied a couple of weeks ago for this program, no one had seen a dime, and then yesterday evening around 5:00, I got a notice from the SBA that they're changing the $10,000 parameter, they're changing it to be that you can only have $1,000 per employee that you had on your payroll at January 31st to a maximum of 10 employees. For a lot of our small businesses, all of a sudden, these funds are no longer available to them, I mean, it's changing, it's still, I mean, it's only been two weeks, and it's a big, big funding package, and it continues to change, and that, it's kind of a blow for these individual businesses that have been waiting for two weeks to see some sort of light at the end of the tunnel. So with respect to the city, I think that offering these services for having an individual become educated and help your merchants navigate the complexities and the dynamically changing complexities of these programs is really a smart thing. Also, we're already saving money on your contractors at the city as well, so I see this as a big benefit for you, you as a city and the community.
Thanks, Wendy, did you want, Wayne Norton has a comment?
Wayne, do you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to commend the city for bringing this issue up, I think this is a terrific idea, and I think it's creative. I love the way Dawn has been able to figure out the possibility of having it FEMA reimbursed, I think running it through the incident command process is, it's creative and a very good way. I think that at times like this, at such times for all of us, especially for small businesses in San Juan, their whole lives were built around small businesses, and it's great that the city is doing what is planned with this resource to help out, I just think it's terrific, and I, you know, I commend the city staff for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Wayne.
Did we finish Dan's question? I'm sorry.
Dan, did we finish your question? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Yeah, I know, not really. So Dawn, when you say that there's mixed messages on FEMA reimbursement, do you mean that the messages are as mixed as they, it won't be reimbursed at all, or a percentage maybe, half, or 100%, or do you have any sense of that?
Right, so there hasn't been a specific program outlined for small cities. What's been outlined are programs for half a million or larger, and so that's where we're working closely with the League of California Cities to get some better understanding of that. They sent this question to their Sacramento office, and the immediate feedback was, I don't think so. And then I sent them my staff report and showed them how I structured it, and they're asking for a second opinion, so we will, I'm sure that FEMA will help us out in one way or another, it's just a matter of how that happens. The whole nature of this is to try and get money into our businesses as soon as possible. So we do take a risk by extending $10,000 or $15,000 over the next few, 20 weeks, I estimated. So I'm trying to minimize the risk while we get more clear answers, council member, I'm just, it's just not clear to me yet.
Right, right, sounds like clarity is at a minimum right now. Would this person need to go through any training with like someone like Wendy, for example, it sounds like she knows a thing or two about all of these websites and forms, which I think I shared last time, I had to fill them all out.
Right.
Or does this person that you have in mind already know everything she needs to know to advise small businesses in San Juan?
I don't know if that's possible to know everything you need to know, because things keep changing. So what I sense is Trish and I interviewed her, a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm, and a lot of capabilities, resume is quite diverse, I shared the resume with Wendy, and Wendy would be certainly, I think, happy to team up with her. When I offered a similar position to Heidi, for example, Heidi Boss, she said, I'd be willing to work with someone like that, but I don't, I don't want to do the job. So I've been chopping this for maybe six weeks now, and I kind of had it in my back pocket in case I needed it, and I verified with her today that she'd be, she's excited to come onboard and help the community out, so. That's half the battle, I think.
All right.
Okay, Jackie, do you have a comment? I see a little.
She has her hand up.
Jackie has her hand up?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, to be proactive and trying to get our business people some kind of funding, because it's really, you know, just more than just that aspect, because what I've heard, the loans really are geared for people that have, that are larger, and it's very difficult to navigate these loans, I think that's a great, great idea that Dawn has gone forward with. And my only cautionary statement is that the vetting of the candidate, it's like, it's a job tailored to fit the candidate, or the candidate is actually an excellent fit, as a, as a community member, you know, we've watched a lot of people come in and out of our little city with big ideas and big promises, I'm not saying that this individual has that sort of situation going on, but I think, you know, it would be nice to, if you're going to spend the 20 grand and you're not sure if it's going to be reimbursed, but you know what, to me, the 20 grand is far better investment in giving back, because we're going to lose so much if we don't help our small business people, so I guess it's a moot point, but I guess just maybe as a council or whoever does the hiring, it's just to please look at references and, you know, vetting the person and finding out if there is responsibilities that they're promising, that they can deliver, you know. So that's all, that's all I have to say, I think, but I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. So we're looking at hiring her temporarily, right?
Yes, it's a part-time, part-time temporary job. If it doesn't work out, then we can advertise it, and as Marina was doing, I shared the flyer, and we'll have the position approved, and we'll have the money budgeted, and we'll go and see if we can find someone else to do it.
I think that's, you know, I think, yeah, I think we're good at trying to get it done and hire her and have her come onboard, and hopefully we get help from FEMA too. But it's worth the investment.
Yeah, it's a.
It's a small investment.
Smaller risk than the last.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, is there any other comments?
Are we ready for a motion of this?
So are there any other comments? If they're not, then, yes, we do need a motion.
Don't move.
I'll make a motion to consider adopting Resolution 202012. He's so moved.
So moved.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, we do, thank you, Sessa.
Or I could get a little more formal, make a motion to consider adopting Resolution 2020 dash whatever, establishing a $20,000 COVID emergency fund, no fund reserves.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Sessa.
Leslie second?
Thank you, Leslie. Okay.
The vote?
Oh, that's right.
Roll call?
So let's do it by roll call now.
Sure.
We're going to vote now.
All right, Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember DeVries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you.
So we'll keep you updated every week at this rate.
Okay, so now we go on to approve affidavit of posting agenda.
I make a motion to approve the affidavit of posting of the agenda.
Okay, Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve the agenda, the posting of the agenda, does someone want to second it?
Can you second?
No.
Okay, Dan seconded it. Oh, thank you, Dan.
Okay, a vote, let's see, Councilmember Flores?
Sorry?
Vote?
Vote.
Oh, yeah.
No, we're voting for the posting of the affidavit.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember DeVries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we go on to reports from city council and city manager.
Okay, I have a report. So yesterday, the policy board of the Monterey Bay Community Power met, we passed the resolution, or actually, a nation item, that is giving for the months of May and June, 50% off of everybody's generation card of the local bill for those two months. That includes all residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural. It's going to cost the Monterey Bay Power approximately $22 million, which will have some direct investment back into our pockets in the form of a lower PG&E bill. I'm going to suggest to you that that's better than any other CCA has done, and it's also a lot better than the PG&E is down here, so given you that. Like PG&E, we are going along with the PSC, our remitition of no power set offs and no late.
no power set offs and no late fees. In other words, you know, you get a vacation on your bill if you need it, as long as emergency order is in force at this date. So it's, it's going to be a big trick to anyone who has a large power bill and to anybody else with a smaller one, it's an extra $20 to $40 in your pocket for two months, May and June.
Okay, thank you, John. Councilman DeVries, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Did he say he doesn't?
No.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Sessa, did I ask you?
I have a LAFCO meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I'll have some information where we're at. Next meeting.
Thank you.
Nothing.
All right.
I just wanted to share real quick, since I got my name on the agenda. Our next meeting will be, we're going to pick up our agenda from March 17th. And we're going to talk about urban growth boundaries. And we've invited LAFCO to our meeting. And we're going to talk about the status of water in our city. We have a couple other minor action items, some CI capital improvement projects that we wanted to get started with restricted funds. So that's what we can look forward to, as well as another COVID update for our next agenda on Tuesday, the 21st. So I just wanted to give you a quick update.
Thank you, John. Okay. So if there's nothing else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, who's...
Second.
Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Ending the meeting.